Good morning. Let's see who we have here, all right? I see the rest of the committee. I see Sam, our host. I see Stegman from the mayor's office. So I'm gonna kick this off. Good morning. My name is Bill Henry. I'm the councilman for the 4th District and chair of the Equity and Structure Committee. Thank you for attending the committee's hearing on several bills. I'm joined today on WebEx by Councilman Christopher Burnett, the 8th District Vice Chair of the committee, and by Councilwoman Danielle McCray of the 2nd District, member of the committee. We are also joined by, let's see, Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark of the 14th District. And we're joined by Matt Stegman of the mayor's office and Sam Johnson of the Office of Council Services, staff to the committee. We'll be getting started with City Council Bill 20-0551. That is Charter Amendment Term Limits. And, oh, this is what I'm realizing. Okay. So this was introduced by the administration. So would Mr. Stegman like to speak on behalf of this bill?
I do apologize, Mr. Chair. Could you remind me which bill we are beginning with this morning?
This is City Council Bill 20-0551, Charter Amendment Term Limits.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bill again is very straightforward. It would just put a limit of two consecutive terms in office for any elected office in the city of Baltimore, the citywide elected offices and members of the city council.
Okay. All right, let me look at the reports. Okay. Do, do, do. We have a report of no position from employees and elected officials, retirement system, and the Comptroller's Office. We have comments from the Law Department and opposition from the Department of Finance. So let's start with the Department of Finance. Is that Ms. James?
Yes, good morning.
Excellent. Good morning.
Good morning. Mara James for the Department of Finance. We do oppose this legislation. It's a reason that we, the reason that we've put for several charter amendments, just thinking that these decisions should be reviewed through the Charter Review Commission to see the broader impact that they may have as they can impact each other and build on each other in that way. I believe you're muted, Mr. Chair. You're muted.
Thank you. I'm trying to reduce the echoes when other people are testifying. All right, thank you, Ms. James. From the Law Department, we have both Mr. Petro and Mr. Turvola. Who would be speaking to this bill for the comments?
Good morning, Mr. Chair. It's Vic Turvola from the Law Department. You know, we, we offered an amendment to the bill just to conform to be, the language to be a little bit more straightforward. This is the same language that was voted on earlier when we talked about a three-term limit. And so if there is sentiment for passing the bill, we would appreciate if you use the language that we are, have amended.
Got it. Thank you. So now asking the committee, are there any questions for any of the agencies from Councilman Burnett or Councilwoman McCray?
Oh, yeah, Mr. Chair. I do recall, and maybe Finance could remind us, that there was a delineation in the, this bill and the previous bill as it related to the retirement system. Can anyone elaborate on that again for us?
And I will defer to David Randall on this, but the distinction was, I believe, that for elected officials, you, they can vest into their retirement after 12 years of service. And so by having a three-term limit, the individuals would vest in that. By setting a two-term limit, there would be fewer individuals possibly that would vest into their benefit. But I will defer to Mr. Randall, if that's okay.
Mr. Randall, you're not muted, but I'm not hearing anything. Is anyone else able to hear Mr. Randall? I don't know. You're having some type of microphone issue because I can see your mouth moving and you don't have the mute icon, but we can't hear any sound. Do you want to try to log out and log back in? Okay. Well, we will, we will wait for you to log back in and come back to you when, when you do so. Let me see if there, Councilman Burnett, did you, I can, I cannot answer the question from Mr. Randall's perspective. I did make the specific request to the mayor's office asking if it was the intention of the mayor in doing so to, to create a situation in which most people would not then vest in the retirement system. And the only people who would end up vesting would be either councilpeople who moved on subsequently to citywide positions, or individuals who managed to somehow serve two terms, take a term off, and then come back and serve again. Not that there's anybody who would be that masochistic to leave the council and then come back to it after a break and a reminder of how wonderful the world can be. But my understanding from the mayor's office is that was not deliberate intention of the bill, which from my perspective just means that if the council and the mayor and the citizens of Baltimore moved forward with this idea, it would just mean that a future city council would have to work to revise the rules of the retirement system and adjust vesting to eight years instead of 12, which would probably have a subsequent effect of pushing back retirement age in order to make everything come out evenly or cost neutral from a, from an actuarial perspective. But I don't know if that may be what Mr. Randall would try to testify to if he was able to. I'm not seeing him back as a participant. Did he come back in as an attendee or is he just not back yet? I don't see him on the attendee list either. So let's see if we, do we have any other questions from the committee for any of the other, any of the other agency staff? Okay, any, Councilwoman Clark, did you have any questions for any of the committees? I mean, any of the agency staff?
I did have a question. I'm a little bit confused about, this is an administration bill. I don't like it. So let me just be, but I don't like term limits that are imposed this way. But like finances, so there are some amendments and objections from administration representatives. And I'm just wondering, is it, who wants this? Who wants this bill? Is the administration even want it now?
Mr. Chair, would you like me to take that one?
I, I think it would probably be best for everyone if you took it rather than me.
Sure. So Councilwoman Clark, thank you for the, the question. So the, the mayor did introduce this bill. He did so fairly late in the process. Basically, this and the other administration bill to reform the council that's also on the agenda today were ideas that the mayor had felt very strongly about, but for various reasons, had not chosen to introduce earlier in the spring when this committee began its, and really, we just, we wanted the bills to be, to be introduced and to be heard with the understanding that either, that either this council could, you know, agree that, hey, this is a very wise way to approach it and we can move forward, or to get the idea out there for discussion when, in all probability, we're going to have a Charter Review Commission that will be, you know, looking more broadly at the structures and functions of city government. So it's the belief of the mayor that, you know, two, two terms, two consecutive terms is appropriate, and he just, he wanted to have that idea discussed.
Mr. Chair, one last thing here.
Certainly, Councilwoman Clark.
You will remember, and I certainly remember, when Councilwoman Agnes Welch reduced the retirement time, presumably to, to meet her needs. And it was, it used to be 16 years to vest. And it was during her term and close to her retirement that we, we went to 12 years and lowered the age. So in a way, we've, we've already done that. And that was not an easy process. It was, ah, I don't know. But that was, at the time, I know I felt, that was, that's it, folks. This is a retirement thing. It's, it's not like, that's, it's not another kind of benefit. It's, you're retiring, so you have a certain age on you also, as well as a certain number of years of service. So I just, I, it's, I'm not on the committee. It's my opinion. This is a good thing to go to this Charter Commission thingy that we're going to have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Randall, welcome back.
Thank you. Are you able to hear me now?
I am. Excellent.
Very good. Thank you. I caught the last part of Ms. Mary Pat Clark, and she's absolutely correct. It was at 1.16 years. If you were to change it, if this bill were to go through, that means the EOS would not be, EOS members would not be vested because two terms is only eight years. And I would hate to entertain the thought of making elected officials vested at eight years. That would be detrimental to the system. It just wouldn't make any economic or logical sense to have someone retired after eight years of service. No pension plan could sustain that. And that's why I put in my, in my notes exactly what the law says now and what you're eligible for. And if you guys are, you know, if this bill passes, sooner or later, you're going to want to change that from 12 to eight. And I would, I would not recommend that. So just looking forward.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Burnett, was that the answers, was that answer sufficient?
That works for me.
Okay. Are there any other questions about any of the agency testimony? Because if not, I'm going to move on to take public testimony. If you are logged in online such that you are using the WebEx portal and you can raise your hand, that icon is located at the bottom of the participants list. Right now, I see our, our old friend, Mr. Sparacco, has his hand raised. So after we go to Mr. Sparacco, if we see no other hands raised, then Sam will unmute the, what appears to be, single call-in member to see if this is the bill that they're here to testify for. Oh, I also see a hand raised for Akil. All right, so Dan first and then Akil.
How you doing, everyone? I just want to make sure I have this, this straight, and I ask this question for posterity. In the event we're looking back in, from, you know, October 2022, wondering why this was put on the ballot in 2020. Am I correct that the mayor, who has spent most of his adult life as an elected official in that office, in that building, who never won election as mayor, who just lost badly in election, is now deciding that no, everybody else in that building should only serve two terms in an office? And I want to know-
I would, I would interrupt to say-
I want to know what possible justification-
Not, not deciding, but proposing. That's, that's just the correction. This is a proposal before the council-
That's correct. He's decided, and I want to, I just want a note for the record. It is beyond ridiculous that, that this would be entertained. I understand Mr. Stegman has a job to do, and I think it's fair for someone to write an ob-ed suggesting that there should be all kinds of changes to the structure of the city council that Mayor Young was on for years and years. But to introduce legislation that this committee could easily vote on, that the council could easily vote on, and put on the ballot two years from now, well, just for the sake of posterity, that's a joke and a complete mockery of the democratic process. And I do have a technical question. Victor's familiar with the conversation we had about the last bill. I read this language again, saying everyone currently on the council who wins an election in November gets two terms, no matter how many terms they've served. And to the extent that's true, I think that is also unfair. If two terms is the right answer, then it should be two terms for everybody. And if you're over that, there should be, okay, you win this election, fine, you get to serve a term because you're not going to undo an election. But if you've already served two or more terms, you shouldn't get to serve two more terms while, so you get six or whatever the number is, while everyone else who's newly elected is subjected to two. So that's just not a fair result. To the extent that's what the language is doing, I say that's unfair. If you guys say that's not what it's doing, then that's good. But it's still ridiculous that this is even being entertained. So thanks for, thanks for the time.
Thank you. Were there any questions for Mr. Sparacco? If not, Akil, you're up.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. This is Akil Patterson. My apologies, I didn't know, this, this WebEx is not my favorite platform to use, and I'm sure you all have the same issues at times with it. This morning, I am grateful, actually, that the mayor is bringing the conversation up of term limits, but two terms is definitely too short. Three at 12 would make more substantial sense to go in line with the benefits package that was already passed many years ago, as Mary Pat, as Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark had pointed to during Agnes Welch's term. And that brings me to another conversation that, the conversation tends to do come up when people have entered the last year or years or months of their elected life, that, well, maybe now we should limit people from doing this because our term limits are good for, you know, public conversation. I would suggest that we would definitely kick this to the next group that does come in to look at this from a practical standpoint of an entire charter review as opposed to a one-off situation. So again, I do believe in term limits. I also believe in ranked choice voting, but guess what? We're probably not going to get that either. So let's just stick with having a more robust conversation overall. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Patterson? All right, let's see. Okay, Akil, don't forget to take your hand down. And I'm seeing no other hands up. Sam, why don't you go ahead and unmute Call-In User 2 and see if they wish to testify? Dollar, you're on the air. Were you interested in testifying on this bill? Okay, I guess we can re, I guess you can mute them again. All right, seeing as how there are no other people interested in testifying on this bill, let me ask, is there anyone interested in making a motion on a favorable report on this bill? All right, this bill, that is for lack of a motion, and we will move on to the next bill. Let's see, that would be, my, Sam, am I right here? Is it 20-0550 Charter Amendment, City Council Modernization and Restructuring Act? That we have as the next one?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, this is a bill for reducing the size of the city council, requiring that the city council vice president be elected by the voters of Baltimore City, specifying that in the case of a vacancy, the position of, in the position of council president, the vice president shall become president. This was also introduced by the administration. So, Mr. Stegman, would you like to make any comments in your position as speaking for the, the sponsor of the bill?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you again, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I know the committee has heard this bill previously, so just to remind everybody what it does, it reduces, basically, we would have seven city council members. And it, it brings us into line with some of our peer jurisdictions in the state of Maryland in terms of the number of council. It also would give the opportunity to, you know, beef up some of the capability in, in individual council offices in terms of staffing and, and all of that. So again, the intent behind this bill and the mayor introducing it when he did was to put an idea, a, a thought on, you know, how to structure the council going forward that he thought might be a more effective way, and to have that be part of the conversation either here in the late stages of this council or at a future Charter Review Commission. So that is the bill, and we appreciate your consideration today.
Thank you. We have agency reports from Finance and Law. Finance opposes. Law has comments. For those of you playing at home, this was the same score as for the previous bill. So once again, we'll start with Finance and then move to Law for Comments. Just Ms. James or Mr. Centimy?
It'll be me again.
Okay, there you go. Ms. James.
Yes, Mara James for the Department of Finance. Again, we oppose this legislation for similar reasons to before. We believe that this restructuring should be done under a Charter Review Commission to review and see what the impacts would be and have a deeper analysis of, again, how these amendments could build on each other and impact one another. Thank you.
So the, the one sort of pushback I'll make on this one is, I can understand how term limits could have a potential financial impact, both in terms of how it impacts the retirement systems, but also previous conversations with the Department of Finance have made it clear that the potential for a, a single administrator as the mayor to continue for an indeterminate amount of time is thought of positively as stability from the financial markets. And so what I'm curious about is, what would the potential impact be? What kinds of potential impacts would there be from Finance's perspective in having a smaller council where the vice president was elected at large?
So we did do some analysis around at-large members and what that would look like. I think it leaves open, there were just some questions for us about what the role of that member would be as the vice president if they're not representing, I think, district as we have it now, and like the power, what power they would have as a council member. So just trying to understand that. But I don't believe that we really thought that this would necessarily have a fiscal impact for, I mean, there could be a fiscal impact in terms of restructuring for the city, but in terms of looking at our credit rating or something like that, it's more of how does this impact our city operations and the way that we serve our constituents? And just possible unintended consequences of making this shift along with other shifts that could come in and not knowing the end of life.
Okay. I, I guess I would say as a comment that it might be worth a conversation over whether this type of position might in the future be construed as comments, and whether you should be formally objecting to the bill as much as you should be providing commentary as to what you should be doing instead. But we can have that conversation offline. And, and it may be especially, that conversation may be informed by where we're going next, which is the comments from the Law Department. So is this Elena or Hillary?
Mr. Chair, it's Vic Turvola.
Oh, yeah, Vic, okay.
Yeah, yeah, I'm mostly on the bubble today. In any event, we are, we're, we're ready to approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency. We pointed out, however, that that's a little ambiguous at this moment about if you pass this bill, how the, if there's a vacancy in the vice presidency, how that would be handled. Presumably, it would be handled like you handle other vacancies in the city council, but since you're electing, you know, so there are options here. And so we would like you to, we think it would be best if you would eliminate that anxiety and tell us how that vacancy would be filled.
Excellent point. I have to admit that I just assumed that it would be filled by vote of the council the way we would right now fill a vacancy as a president, because that's how you would deal with a citywide. But if the, if the, if the amendment as written doesn't say it explicitly, then that would be an important thing. Thank you. And so, yeah, I would, I would expect that if this does, as with the, the previous one, become an issue that we expect the Charter Review Commission to take up next year, then I would ask that the Law Department formally make that comment to them as well. Thank you. Members of the committee, are there any questions for the agencies? Seeing none, Councilwoman Clark, did you have any questions? Vic, you're not muted, by the way.
No, unfortunately, I don't have a copy of this bill. So I gather it's seven councilpeople and then a president and vice president elected at large?
Yep, nine members total. I mean, for, what I will, what I will comment on is that it, it's, you know, in terms of structure, it would be relatively easy to simply take the 14 single-member districts and combine them into seven single-member districts in terms of geography and, but that would be moot because we're going to have new census numbers next year anyway. But yeah, it would, it would be going down to nine members.
Let me just say one thing. One of the important things, when we went from our big districts, six districts, three reps, down to the, the single-member districts, what we, what we gained was personal relationships. I mean, it's like a family. um, what we, what we gained was, um, personal relationships, I mean, it's like a family. You practically know everybody's name, and that's a good thing, and that's what people wanted. And from, uh, uh, as Chris Burnett, Councilman Burnett knows so well, it helps you have a format for raising funds, uh, if you're not a wealthy person to run for office. And, I mean, he's been working so hard on that. But, so, um, to take it back out after what went, everybody went through, um, is, is a major move, and I think we have to remember why people wanted these individual districts and the work that's gone into, for example, campaign funding, uh, to make those districts viable for regular people to be able to run and win for office. That's all, I think we, this sounds like a great candidate to me to go to that commission. And by the way, I hope you're not thinking of dividing up, uh, the fourth district.
Well, technically, it wouldn't be combining, I mean, it wouldn't be dividing up.
It'd be adding to it.
Yeah.
We're always happy to see more people, we don't want to lose anybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, except me.
Is, is there, I, I'm looking and I'm not seeing any, uh, any other hands raised of participants, so let me ask, if there are no other questions by the, the council, uh, we'll go to public testimony. Uh, so again, if you're participating online, please raise your hand. Um, and, uh, if you are a call-in user, if you are a de-call-in user, uh, we will unmute you after we have done the attendees who've raised their hand. Mr. Patterson? Uh, please unmute Akil, thank you.
Thank you all, thank you, uh, uh, Mr. Chairman. Um, again, uh, going back to, uh, what I would prefer is ranked choice voting. Obviously, in a city, uh, like Baltimore, um, obviously, where we have strong democratic ties. What I will say is that if we were to do anything that was gonna be productive, it would be to eliminate, uh, the city council president as an elected wide city office and make it in line with other jurisdictions that are similar in size that actually vote internally. So that means you would have an internal vote for the, uh, city council president as opposed to the current system where it is a citywide elected office. Even the city of New York has a, what they call the public advocate, as opposed to the city council president. They have a city council speaker who is elected internally. So, again, I think having an equal playing field and them having a side amongst themselves, because the city council presidency should be focused on the advantage of the colleagues, not necessarily the voice of the city. Um, and again, that is just perspective. Um, but as for this specific bill, I do not feel as though it actually serves any real purpose at this time for this city, um, in this moment, thank you.
Thank you, uh, seeing no other hands raised. Akil, don't forget to lower yours. Uh, we're gonna unmute, uh, call-in user number two again and see if this is the bill they would like to testify on. Call-in user number two, you are unmuted. If you would like to testify, please, uh, introduce yourself, if not, just say no comment. Okay, um, we're gonna take that as a no comment, and, uh, we have no other requests for testimony for this bill. So, I'm going to ask, is, there, there being no amendments to consider for this bill, is there a motion to move, uh, twenty dash zero five five zero Charter Amendment, City Council Modernization and Restructuring? All right, uh, with no motion, uh, this bill dies, and we will move on to the next bill. Uh, City Council Bill Twenty Dash Zero Five Zero Four, Charter Amendment, City Council Composition. Uh, this bill was introduced by Councilmember Dorsey, uh, for the purpose of increasing the size of the city council to fifteen members, um, elected from the districts, requiring the city council president to be elected by the city council from among its members every two years, uh, clarifying the terms and manner for the council vice president and the council representative to the planning commission, and allowing the city council to remove a member from the position of president. Um, my recollection is that we have already had at least one hearing on this bill where the sponsor discussed, uh, prospective amendments to it, uh, which would, uh, instead of having fifteen single-member districts, have a smaller number of single-member districts and a, an amount of, uh, at-large members. But I don't have those amendments in front of me, and it does not appear, oh, there we go. All right, so it would, it would be ten single-member districts and five at-large members. Um, let's see, we have, uh, uh, once again, opposition from the Department of Finance and favorable from the Department of Law. Uh, well, I, I'll, I'll call on finance first and ask, um, is this position and report, uh, based on the bill as written, or does it include the amendments? Uh, in, were the, were the amendments that are before us part of the finance department's consideration? Okay, um, all right, so, um, go ahead, Ms. James.
Um, uh, the finance department is opposed to this legislation, again, thinking it should be under the Charter Review Commission, doing a restructuring of this kind, possible unintended consequences. I will sound like a broken record possibly, but...
A, a, actually, if, 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 for, for brevity's sake, you wanna just say, uh, this, a, again, we wanted to go to the Charter Review Commission. I'm perfect, I'm perfectly happy to accept that as the department's position, thank you. Um, uh, and Law Department was favorable, so unless there's a burning need to amplify on that, I'm happy to accept that as is. Um, so, my question would go to the committee, uh, Councilwoman Burnett and Councilwoman McRae, do you have any questions, uh, for either finance or law? All right, Councilwoman, oh, Mr. Councilwoman Burnett?
I'm good, I don't.
Okay, all right, uh, Councilwoman Clark, did you have any questions?
No, I, I hate it, but for the committee. Um, I'll have to hate it at the city council session. It's, um, I like people to have some responsibilities for certain parts of the city.
All right, thank you, looking, uh, now, if, uh, seeing no other questions from the council, uh, I'm looking to see if there's public testimony. So, again, please take this opportunity to raise your hand, uh, if you would like to testify. And, uh, I see, uh, Mr. Sporaco, you are recognized.
Well, I can't tell if there's any point in making comments on this, because I, you know, I'm, I'm a mere civilian outsider watching, so I have no idea if all of this is just, uh, uh, pointless exercise or there's actual meaningful actions taken on, on any of this legislation. But I guess I would agree in part with, uh, Councilwoman Clark, like, this setup is basically the worst of all world in that you still have fifteen of you, which is, if you're gonna make changes, there, I'm sorry, there's just way too many people on this council, given the current population. Um, to make big decisions about policy in the future of the city as the current council wants to do, I think you should be, I think you should have had, you should win with more than three thousand votes in the primary. So that's just me. Um, but to Councilwoman Clark's point, like, you still have much larger districts, uh, so it, this seems to be a bit of a mishmash and, and not, uh, not solving any particular problem at all. Although it does satisfy a lot of people's ambitions, because with five at-large seats, you know, everyone gets to pretend to be council president, which is what half the people on the council wanna be. Anyway, I would point one technical, uh, issue, which doesn't make a lot of sense to me. I noticed that, uh, it's great that, um, this would empower the council to elect its own speaker, its own leader. Uh, that's a very good idea, um, as, uh, as, as, as those of you who will continue to be on the council are going to be in our area within four years. Um, but then it grants that right to the council, and then it takes it away. So the Section Three, Part C says, the council can choose its own speaker, but it can't choose the same speaker twice in a row. And that doesn't make any sense to me at all. Like, there's no reason for the, for the presidency to have to be term limited in that way. If people on the council want to elect somebody, they can, and if they want to do it again, they can. So that doesn't, I don't know why you would have that limitation. Um, those are my comments.
Thank you, um, looking to see if there are any other hands raised. Uh, no, um, although I will, um, opine that, um, I believe I only got like twenty-seven or twenty-nine hundred votes in my first primary in two thousand and seven. But in my defense, I was running against eight other people, so, you know, that's, that's all I can say for that. It, it, it was, you know, it was enough. Um, but, uh, as, as Mr. Patterson has testified already, and the benefits, the benefits of ranked choice voting would make those types of concerns obsolete. Um, I guess we should, uh, once again, uh, unmute, oh, he, no, call, the call-in, the call-in, the caller is gone. So, we have no one to unmute, and we have no other hands raised for public testimony. Uh, so, I will, uh, well, hmm, I guess technically, there, there are amendments, so, at this point, I would ask if there is a motion to move the amendments for this bill. And seeing none, um, I would ask if there is a motion to move the bill unamended? Seeing none, uh, this, uh, bill dies, and we will move on to, uh, City Council Bill Twenty Dash Zero Five Six Three, Charter Amendment, Disposition of City-Owned Real Property, uh, for the purpose of amending the city charter to repeal the city's general authority to dispose of city-owned real property at private sale, conforming and clarifying related provisions and submitting this amendment to the qualified voters of the city for adoption and rejection. Uh, this bill was sponsored by Councilman Schleifer, um, and I did not see him signed in earlier. It's, um, and I do not see him signed in now. Uh, so we will forego sponsor remarks. And, uh, we, this bill was referred to Finance, Law, HCD, Real Estate, and Transportation. Um, I have opposition from Finance, comments from Law, and I don't have a listing for HCD, Real Estate, or Transportation, but I see, um, representatives of those agencies, uh, in the audience, so, uh, we will work our way down. Let's start again with, uh, the Department of Finance.
Um, thank you, I believe the last time when we spoke about this bill, the sponsor, um, the concerns that we raised were about more technical concerns that could come up in terms of having some properties that, um, that need to be sold directly to an individual to finish a development project based on some technical issue that it wasn't sold initially, could then be put up into the public to be acquired and infringe upon those projects. Um, I believe the sponsor was talking about coming up with an amendment, but without that, uh, the Department of Finance would oppose this bill.
Gotcha, thank you. Um, Law Department?
Hi, Mr. Chair, this is Hillary Ruley from the Law Department. We still have the same comments as before, we stand by our report.
Um, I don't have a before, I think this is the first time this bill has been heard.
No, actually, it's been heard before. This bill has been heard before, and we went through agency reports, and that was, as, um, Finance was suggesting, there was a suggestion for amendments, I've never seen them, but, um, you know, again, it's legal, we just caution that, that the dire consequences that would happen if you could no longer sell property privately.
My mistake, I'm sorry, I had this on a different list, okay.
Um, Mr. Chairman, is it possible, I, I don't recall myself, but is it possible that this may have been one of the hearings that needed to be adjourned and rescheduled? When there was incorrect information, I, I could be wrong about that, I just, uh, I...
It, it was.
I rec, I recall this being, I recall this matter being heard, but I don't know if it's been heard in a, in a public forum, I guess.
But I think it was, in fact, already rescheduled and heard fully, but, but I, that could be my recollection, uh, as Ms...
Okay, well, we'll take that now for what it's worth, um, and move on to, uh, Housing and Community Development, Ms. Murdoch?
Uh, yes, good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Um, as some of the others have previously mentioned, um, this bill was, uh, presented to the, the council previously. Uh, our bill report is in the Legisdar file, so I apologize if you had not, um, and members of the committee had not had a chance to see it. Um, we stand by our report in opposition. Um, most of the work that DHC does, uh, as far as awarding city-owned properties, is done through a public sales process, and I'm sure many of you are familiar with the emails from our Development Division about properties in your neighborhood, whether it be a school or residential property. Um, but in, in light of that, uh, some of the work of our brother and sister agencies would be affected by this bill, and as Finance had mentioned previously, um, oftentimes, uh, DHCD works with the Department of Transportation on street and alley closures for development projects, and this charter amendment would severely limit, if not eliminate, uh, the street closings, opening, and sales. Um, additionally, uh, there are occasions when DHCD identifies city-owned properties appropriate for transition to the Housing Authority of Baltimore City, and this is in order to meet public housing needs and community development needs, um, around affordable housing goals. So, for those reasons, we stand by our report in opposition.
Okay, uh, Department of Real Estate, uh, Mr. Knighton or Mr. Horton?
Good, good morning, Mr. Chairman, uh, Jim Knighton from the Comptroller's Office. Um, we, uh, the, the report we had submitted previously was also, uh, in opposition to this bill. We stand by that report. Um, in our opinion, the, an unintended consequence of the bill would be for, to put individuals and nonprofit organizations, uh, possibly in a bidding contest with speculative investors or well-capitalized developers, when you're talking about things like, like, uh, vacant lots, side yards, and other underutilized property that could be repurposed for beneficial community use. You know, we, we would hate to see some of these small, community-based nonprofits ending up, uh, getting in a, a bidding war, so to speak, with a better-capitalized organization. Uh, that's the sum and substance of our position.
Okay, thank you, and finally, Department of Transportation, Mr. Davis? Liam, are you, are you there? Um, is anyone else here from DOT? Mr. Stegman, do you wanna take that, or should we just skip it?
Uh, give me one moment, 'cause I, I believe DOT does have a report on this bill, and I am refreshing my recollection of what their position on.
Understood.
Yeah, so, uh, DOT, uh, did, uh, oppose this bill, and it was for many of the same reasons that have already been, uh, already been laid out by the other agencies.
All right, I'll accept that as an administrative ditto. Um, that then takes us to committee members. Uh, Councilwoman Burnett, Councilwoman McRae, do you have any questions for any of the agency folk? All right, seeing none, Councilwoman Clark, did you have any questions? Okay, uh, seeing as the council has no questions, uh, we will go to public testimony. Um, I see no one under there, and I... Um, I see no one under there and under the attendees, uh, I see Akil, Mr. Patterson. You're recognized.
I, I, I find this almost comical that there was a comment made that, uh, they don't want nonprofits getting into a bidding, bidding war as opposed to just making $1 purchases for a nonprofit that are directly tied to certain people's offices. That is the comical part here, is that there are, we, we understand bidding wars, but when we just give property away to those who have connections to direct access and power is another, and it, it's almost, again, it's comical. It's predatory. It's allowing few to gain off of their connections for less than what anyone else would be able to. The city has to redefine its zoning and planning, uh, code as well, because a majority of these properties that sit vacant for years that have been offered to be bought, um, oftentimes are not even given the opportunity to be bought by Baltimore City residents who would look to rehab those homes and places. So I think this, this is comical. It needs to be relooked at and it, yes, it should not come out of any committee.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, let's see. Um, don't forget to take your hand down when you're done testifying. Um, I see no other hands raised, so we're gonna conclude public testimony. And, um, I, I will say before asking for a motion on this bill that, um, I am, uh, supportive of the intent of the sponsor, um, to, uh, to maximize openness and transparency in the disposition of city-owned real property, but I also find a number of the agency concerns, um, about the logistics compelling. And, um, I look forward to seeing this topic taken up again, uh, when it, it has been sufficiently amended, uh, to eliminate those logistical concerns. Um, that being opined, is there a motion to move this bill? All right. Seeing none, this bill dies. And next we have city council bill 20 dash 0489, charter amendment, Board of Estimates Composition, uh, for the purpose of reconstituting the Board of Estimates to comprise the mayor, comptroller and city council president. Bill was introduced by Council President Brandon Scott. I believe the council president is available right here online. So, uh, I recognize Council President.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the entire committee. Uh, Mr. Chair and members of the committee, as you know, I have a amendment, uh, that we're gonna be proposing, uh, to this, to this, uh, piece of legislation. I'm gonna walk you through that very quickly. Uh, the amendment would simply remove the DPW director and actually add a, a citizen advocate position. This would be in a elected position modeled after, uh, how Minneapolis, uh, has a member on their, on their Board of Estimates. Uh, this allows the people to have a voice and increase transparency in the BOE. The people therefore can choose to, uh, give the mayor mandate or put a check on the spending power via disposition. I know that Finance and others will oppose due to the impact on the mayor's power. However, I'm grateful, uh, for their cooperation and input as we consider, uh, various proposals. Uh, this isn't a perfect resolution to that concern, but I hope it's, it's something, uh, that's an easier pill to, to swallow for, lack of a better term. Uh, the rest of the bill is structural, uh, modeled after the charter sections for comptroller and the council president, uh, for removal. And also, I just wanna also put out that this, uh, as we move forward, is still a part, one portion of a total and complete, uh, reform of how we do, uh, procurement and contracts in Baltimore and something that I'm excited, uh, hopefully in the future to be able to fully, uh, invest in. And I, I, I want to actually, uh, bring on Director Young really quickly, if I can, Mr. Chair, to allow him to walk through and review the amendment with you and the committee.
Certainly. Mr. Young?
Thank you, members of the committee. Um, uh, members of the committee, as you all know, we've, uh, had conversations, um, about this amendment, uh, prior to the hearing, just trying to make sure that you all were up to date on what this, um, proposal was and what this amendment does. The president really gave, uh, the general overview. It removes the DPW director, which you'll see, uh, on the bottom of page one, which is also posted, uh, by committee staff right now, uh, removes the DPW director, replaces it with the citizen advocate. And yes, uh, somebody, uh, referenced New York City's public advocate today. Uh, we did, uh, kind of plagiarize that name from them. We thought it was a good one. Um, and it, we thought it also kind of reflected what we were trying to do here, which is, uh, to have the public have, uh, a say. Secondly, um, it talks, we, this proposal allows for that citizen advocate to have a deputy, um, and that's specifically for the purpose of when on the BOE there is a recusal, for whatever reason, um, that individual would therefore have someone who is working with them hand in hand on all of those proposals and contract negotiations, uh, so that with that person can come on and, uh, do that vote in the same way that the other positions have a depth, have a person who can be a designate, uh, to handle that role in those situations. The rest of the bill, um, is really talking about the duties of the advocate to serve as a member of the board, perform any other duty, uh, as provided by an ordinance, a future ordinance by the city council. Um, and then finally, removal and vacancy. That's about, that's pretty much modeled after, uh, the same removal and vacancy procedures for, um, the city council president and, uh, the comptroller. So that's pretty much, uh, the technical of the bill. Thank you to Tony DiFranco for, uh, his help pulling this together.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, let's see. We have, um, agency reports, uh, well, okay, we'll just go through the agency reports as they are, um, with the understanding that I don't think the existing agency reports reflect the amendment that you just shared. Actually, let me ask this. Um, Mr. Young, did you have a chance to share these amendments with Finance, Law or DPW in advance of the hearing? Okay. All right. So, um, let's just go down the list. Uh, Finance, uh, your reactions to the bill as amended?
Hi, this is, this is Bob Sennemy this time, representing Department of Finance. Um, we did, we did see the amendments. Um, it doesn't change, um, our position on the bill. Uh, we were originally opposed to this bill. Um, and the reason is, is we think there's a good reason that there's a, um, a, a majority for the mayor to get things through the Board of Estimates. Um, for better or worse, there are a lot of routine things that go through the Board of Estimates, including position actions, contracts, a whole host of things, the budget each year. Um, to, to, to add a representative that's not appointed necessarily by the mayor, uh, creates the possibility that, uh, things could get slowed down. And, you know, to echo our, our other comments on a lot of the other bills, we think the strong mayor form of government is fine. We think the issue is that we've had management outages over the past couple of years. We think the system works, um, when we have, you know, good people in those positions and there's no reason to, to, to change that. Um, this, this action, this amendment, I understand the concept of what's trying to be done, but in our opinion, it just injects too much risk into the Board of Estimates process when there are so many critical and really what a citizen's view is routine functions that have to go through the board in order for us to continue to deliver, um, you know, services efficiently. So it, we did look at it. We understand the idea that we're trying to get across here, but it doesn't change our position on wanting to have the mayor with a firm and solid majority on the Board of Estimates at, at a minimum.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Law Department?
This is Victorville again for the City Law Department. Uh, we've reviewed the amendments and we are ready to approve the bill as amended for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you. Uh, Department of Public- anybody from DPW on the call? If not, I'm gonna go to-
Um, yeah, Mr. Chair, um, I wanted to let you know, so, um, Marsha Collins from, uh, the Department of Public Works did reach out before the hearing. Uh, they had, uh, a number of conflicts and were not able to attend. Um, you know, they, they had concerns about, you know, weighing in as the Department of Public Works on the propriety of removing the Director of Public Works from the board. Um, they would defer to the, um, analysis of the Law Department as to whether it's something that, you know, you can do and to the wisdom of the council in whether it's something you should do.
Well, not gonna take a shot at somebody while they're taking the high road, so, okay. Um, uh, that being the end of agency reports, are there any questions, uh, from the committee for any of the agencies or for, uh, the president's office?
Uh, I don't, Mr. Chair, I had an opportunity to talk to him at length about what was being proposed.
Okay. Um, Councilwoman McCray?
I have no questions.
All right. Councilwoman Clark?
I, I, I do have, I have a question. Um, does that mean there's an E, if, if this amendment were adopted, does that mean that there would be four members of the Board of Estimates?
Mr. Council President?
So, you would, you would take out-
Yeah, no, Councilwoman, it would still be five. The DPW person will be, oh, replaced by the civ- citizen advocate.
So, but you're keeping the city solicitor?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry. My version, I somehow, okay, so you've got the, you've got the mayor, you've got the president, or you have a president? I guess we still have a president of the council, yeah. At least right now. And, and so then the, the mayor, the president, the comptroller and, and the solicitor and this, uh, citizen, right? That's, so that would be five. That, I, I mean-
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. I, I'm a strong mayor form of government, um, supporter, but I'm not on this committee, so I don't have a vote yet. Um, so I was just at least checking to make sure we had an odd number of votes.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'll, I'll save my comments for the proper place for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Um, if there are no questions from the council, uh, then what I would do next is go to public testimony. Uh, on the attendees, I see Mr. Sparakas hand raised, so I recognize Dan.
Hi, everyone, again. Uh, it's, it's so lovely to have this, uh, personal meeting with you all. So I guess the meeting just got real. Um, 'cause now Bob is on and the council president is on. And so if I'm reading the tea leaves, you're gonna vote on this and vote it through, and law just said they're fined for legal sufficiency and obviously Finance objects, but you guys always ignore Finance objections to these things, so they don't matter. Uh, sorry, Bob. So, because I think this is real, I guess I'm gonna say a few things that, that I think are of urgent importance. Um, first, if you're gonna remove somebody from the Board of Estimates, I mean, clearly the least relevant person is the comptroller. You know, the, when, when, when the Board of Estimates was invented, you know, the head of DPW was, uh, there because they were responsible for all capital contracting. And all the big contracts that go through the Board of Estimates are capital contracts. Now, a lot of that these days is also IT, but usually DPW has been involved in a lot of those purchases as well. So removing that person and their expertise when it comes to the largest, most sophisticated contracts the city enters, I don't think that makes any sense. Meanwhile, the comptroller has no meaningful role in capital contracting. I have no idea why the comptroller needs to have a yes vote on these people the mayor wants to hire, uh, et cetera. But then if you replace it with a citizen and that person has to win a citywide elected official, a, a citywide elected race, how is that gonna happen? So somebody, and, and obviously, I think, when I think of the citizen advocate who could be sitting up there, just naturally because I've seen her at so many meetings, I think of Kim Trueheart. So you're saying Kim Trueheart is gonna have to run a citywide election, uh, which normally costs like a million dollars to get that seat? I don't think that's gonna happen. It seems far more likely what's gonna happen is if the mayor has gotta find a citizen they want and then put them on comptroller's ticket and then spend all the money necessary to put this person on the board so that that person basically becomes the mayor's vote. I don't know how else you would win that job. Um, that doesn't seem like much of an improvement. Uh, also, it's just very funny to me how that becomes a far more interesting and important job than everything. No, who on earth would wanna be a city council person when it's said you could be that person? Uh, that, that is an incredibly powerful job. You have, you have a mayor and a city solicitor who are always gonna be on one side of the bill, and then you have two independent elected officials, the city council president and then the comptroller. And if they choose to ally against the mayor, it's a two-two tie. And then it comes down to the citizen representative to decide. Uh, you, we have a room full or, you know, a Zoom room full of experts here who speak very hard and have some honesty and function in the city government. And then all of that thinking is gonna resolve itself in what this citizen advocate who gets elected by part of the vote. Um, that person is gonna be deciding what contracts we award and what, what business the city actually does? I mean, that, that's remarkable to me and, and, and that's again why I have to reiterate my question about how immersive the offense would have. You all wanna have a city administrator, and I think the council is universally in favor of that, as far as I'm aware, as are, I think, that's the one charter amendment that the, the public is like, yeah, that sounds good to us. And then I said, the whole logic of that was we should have somebody making sure the trains are running on time. But then every decision that person makes when it comes to who they wanna hire for the money that they think needs to be spent to keep the trains running on time, has to go to this Board of Estimates. So that person isn't really in charge of anything as before. The Board of Estimates will be in charge of everything. And now the mayor has to hope that they can cobble together the vote, which means, um, as some of you are very aware, all sorts of backroom deals, right? We, we just watched a backroom deal happen and it's, and we're somebody who's not even yet an elected official and magically they're gonna get all kinds of staff and salary because of reason. And that's gonna have to happen every week in the meeting or before the meeting, where in order for the mayor to get a contract through, you're gonna have to beg the council president or beg the comptroller because they don't have enough votes. If the citizen decides they no longer like the mayor, or they wanna vote against the mayor for any reason at all, they get to do it in gridlock city government. Finally, and what's, what's most remarkable to me about this conversation is the degree with the council itself has accepted its own total marginalization within the system we currently have. You know, as I said before, and I realize it's not an issue for you guys, but nobody attends these meetings, but the Board of Estimates meetings are always busy. And they're always busy, as everyone understands, that's where the power is. So the council has had loads of legislation, but for the most part, the council has said, has talked about how little power they have, how little say they have. And you granted yourself power over the budget, but again, you're still irrelevant when it comes to the budget because the Board of Estimates decides everything. That's where the process begins and ends. So you can do whatever you want, assuming a certain charter amendment passes. You still don't really matter because the Board of Estimates matters. And the whole reason the Board of Estimates exists was to sideline the city council. And with so many vibrant and smart and ambitious people out of the council, what's been most interesting to me is partly a total uninterest in turning the council into truly the place where the people of the city care most, where hearings are held and people care to attend them. You know, when things happen in a network, people really do pay attention. People go to hearings. They, when cities are given on the floor, they matter. You know, there's some drama to it. We all know there's not much drama to, to the average city council meeting, it's all decided in advance. Very few people show up. And again, it's totally different at the Board of Estimates, because everyone understands that's where the power is. And I don't understand, I still haven't- And I don't understand, I still have not for ending to make a case that explains why the Board of Estimates is something that should continue to exist. The reference from Minneapolis, I understand that, but frankly, Minneapolis is not a particularly well-governed city. And the main reason Minneapolis has this board is because the main reason people think Minneapolis is a nice city is because of its parks, and its green city. And its green, its parks are managed by a separate bureaucracy. So, their board is the meat point of two independent systems. It's similar to the capital program in, with the park system in Montgomery County, T P County. Okay, these are separate systems that have to meet at a place and make decisions. You know, this is not, this is a very different situation. So, I, I assume you're all gonna vote on this, and this, this is gonna be on the ballot in 2022, and I I just have very profound governance concerns that, um, uh, I hope it turns out to be not true. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, don't forget to take your hand down for future, uh, bills because we do have more bills before us. All right, seeing no other public testimony, uh, being sought, uh, I will ask if there is a motion to move the amendments?
Uh, Mr., Mr. Chair, um, I, I, I do appreciate all the feedback on this. Um, and I will be making a motion to move the, uh, amendment as an opportunity to give us a thumbs up and a thumb down on the concept, uh, but I do, I think, at this juncture, uh, this should be reviewed by the, uh, review commission, I mean, in early 2021. Um, we've had a different, a number of different iterations of this much-needed reform. Uh, and I think if, if this juncture given, we're approaching a new term, it should be taken up by the commission and the new council. Uh, but I would like to move the amendment, uh, as an opportunity for a vote on the amendment.
Okay, uh, the amendments are moved. Is there a second?
Big Ray, second.
Okay, the amendments are moved and seconded. Uh, two, um, Chairman votes no. Councilman Burnett?
Uh, yes, I think it's, I think it's an interesting concept to empower someone like a Kim Trueheart to be on the board. Uh, not that it should be Kim Trueheart, but I, I think the concept of better empowering the uh, community to have a voice in this, uh, is important, um, and so I'd be wanting to give a thumbs up on the idea.
Okay, Councilman Burnett votes yes. Councilwoman McCray?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCray votes yes. With two in the affirmative, the amendment's passed. Now, is there a, is, I'm sorry, there are comments in the, in the chat. Um, the, uh, with the amendments approved, is there a motion to move the bill as amended? Okay, with, uh, the bill dies for lack of a motion. Uh, two, two, let's see, that takes us to City Council Bill 20 dash 0442, Legislation Equity Assessment and Fiscal Note Requirement Introduced by the Council President. Uh, Mr. President, would you like to respond to remarks?
Uh, yeah, yes, and, and thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. Also, I just wanted to lift up that, um, because we've been talking about her recently, that Ms. Trueheart is having a little bit of health problem, so that we all wish her well and pray for her as well. So, I just wanted to lift that up. Uh, thank you, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you to the members of the committee. Uh, I want to, uh, for their work, I want to acknowledge both council service and finance, uh, for the work they've engaged with my office throughout the year to adjust the processes and the reporting. Uh, there's, there's still work to do to get the equity, uh, portion of finance and others. Of course, and as we look like we know that as we move into the next term, we're gonna be really, uh, focusing in on equity, but also the, the, uh, the actual work of the equity assessment program that all of us on the council push forward, and really have an administration that wants to really help, that guide us through all our work. Uh, and then that's something that we're gonna have to, to work, uh, with that office directly about, uh, to make sure that we are, are making this more plain and clear. But I think that we all know and believe that we need to, uh, uh, have some sort of fiscal, especially with the increased responsibility, uh, coming to the council, uh, maybe, uh, depending on the voters. We have to have some sort of, of fiscal analysis and, and, and things on every seat, piece of legislation, and also thinking about equity analysis as well, because there's two guiding principles that should be guiding us as we move forward, uh, as a, as the council moves forward as a body. And I'm gonna turn it over to Kalen to review the amendments.
Thank you, Mr. President, um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks, Sam, for bringing up the amendments. So, I'm just gonna walk through them. Uh, members, you received an email from me this morning. I apologize for the, uh, late hour at which you received it. Um, but, uh, the chair, uh, respectfully or thankfully has allowed for us to be able to walk through it. Um, when we talked this morning, um, it's, these are really simple amendments and, um, uh, that address some of the issues that were brought up in the last hearing, um, and we hope that they are acceptable to the committee. The first one, um, amends the purpose clause to remove, uh, what was brought up before, the prohibition on, uh, moving bills that did not get the, uh, report. The committee mentioned that it, this could allow for an administration to therefore have a negative impact on bills and half of the council's work. So, we removed that, uh, in the purpose clause on Amendment One and Amendment Two. Um, it is, excuse me, in Amendment Three, you'll see where it's actually removing the rest of the text. Amendment Two, uh, replaces the requirement that council services prepare these reports with a requirement that they help facilitate the completion of these reports. Uh, and I'm gonna go into why that is right now in the next amendment, which is Amendment Three. Um, again, removes the, uh, voting prohibition, uh, as reflected in Amendment One. But then also, um, the second thing that it does is it will require that every bill be referred to the, both the Department of Finance and the Department of Equity and Civil Rights. Um, and the, that's because, um, you know, as we all know, right now, every bill is already referred to the Law Department for forming legal sufficiency. And so now with this, we would require every bill to go to those departments. In conversations with finance, uh, we talked about how they could simply say if there was a, if there was a bill that has no fiscal impact, a, a simple report that says that, uh, will be easy for them to do. And then, of course, if there is one, we would want that analysis. And similarly, with equity and civil rights, it would be the same thing. Um, we do anticipate that this amendment might have a fiscal impact on, uh, staffing and requiring for personnel in those offices. And so we have asked finance, and I'm looking forward to hearing, uh, you know, what that impact might be for the committee's consideration today. The Fourth Amendment removes, uh, what would have been a duplicative, uh, equity assessment to be done by the Office of Council Services, and it coordinates with the Amendment Number Two, which asks for them to facilitate, uh, the, uh, uh, agencies to get that done. It also, um, codifies that the president has the discretion to, uh, make agency referrals. We already know that the president's office does that. It just adds it into this bill and into the code, just as a law now. Amendment Number Five requires that the submission of these reports occur at least two days before a bill hearing. Um, and it also requires what we call agency cooperation. Um, and show that way where the Office of Council Services is looking for specific information. Um, the agencies under this law would be required to respond to council services within three days. Um, and that response is fluid. You know, we, um, we, we conceptualize it as, you know, if it takes longer, you let them know, but you need to be responding to them within three days of that, of that, uh, request. And then the final amendment is Amendment Six, which pointed out that, uh, the bill, you know, as previously drafted, uh, had an enactment clause of July 2020, which we know is to pass now, so it moves it to the next fiscal year of 2021. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the committee about the amendments? Okay, then, uh, uh, Mr. Young, did the agencies get a chance to review these amendments in advance?
The amendments were sent, uh, uh, and I should take a moment, um, to, to, so the answer is yes. Law and, uh, finance, well, Law got the amendments this morning, um, and I spoke to finance, um, but I wasn't able to send it to them until, uh, to them yet. But, um, let me also just take a quick moment to thank, uh, the staff of council services. You know, normally we don't ask them to help with amendments and work on a bill, but because of the impact of this bill on their office, they were very forthright and helpful, um, with helping get this bill away, and so I just wanna also acknowledge their help as well. Sam, in particular.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let's do agency reports then, and start with, uh, Department of Finance.
Hi, this is, uh, Bob Sanemi, representing the Department of Finance. So, um, on the original bill, uh, just a, a couple of comments, and then I'll, I'll talk about the amendments. So, in the original bill, you know, we, we appreciate the, the intent of this bill, which is, which was really to improve, um, the financial analysis and the information that, um, the council and the council president's office get for, for, for considering bills. Um, when we talked with the council president's office, we reminded them that we do do a fiscal analysis on many bills, the ones that do, you know, on its face have, have some kind of impact. Um, and over the last year, um, with the, you know, with the, the, you know, we've dedicated one position on our staff in the department, which is Mara, to really, you know, coordinate and make the responses more consistent. Um, but a lot of the work that does get delegated out to our analysts to have the, the, the expertise on certain areas of the budget. And so I think any improvement in that kind of work, whether it was with us or the council services, is, is, is a step in the right direction. Um, our concern that we had expressed in the original bill was, are you creating a duplication of effort? Where you have financial analysis and fiscal notes being done by finance, and then in the original bill, you would have, um, kinda the same work, I would say, being done on the council side, uh, on the council services side. I, 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 we also discussed the idea that where the analysis comes from does matter. Uh, I think there's an impression that, um, you know, anything that comes from finance is just baked already by, by the mayor, and that if the mayor agrees with something, finance has to follow suit. Uh, you know, that's true in some cases, obviously. I mean, we work for the administrative side of the, of the, um, of the city here, um, but we do have an opportunity before the bills get finalized to share concerns. And even if the mayor supports something and we had concerns, I think we've, we've made progress in making sure at least those concerns get mentioned in the bill. Um, even if we can't, you know, object to something that we have a problem with or vice versa, we try to give a, uh, as best we can, a kind of, um, non-political answer and a financial answer to those responses. So, I think we've made improvements there. I think with the amendments, we don't have an, an issue with them. It kinda keeps the current, uh, structure in place. Um, we probably will. What we haven't had a chance to evaluate yet is how many more staff people this would require. On the finance side, we might need somebody to help keep up with the volume because we would need to evaluate every single bill uh, that goes into effect, even if many of those, uh, and the majority of those probably have little or no financial impact. And the same is true on the civil rights side. Uh, if they're evaluating every bill for an equity component, which we do agree is, is a, is a good positive step, uh, that should be done, uh, we would have to evaluate the resource requirements. Um, so we haven't had a chance to do that yet, but I would estimate that we're gonna need at least two to four additional positions, uh, to keep up with the volume, um, and to make sure that we both, our office and the Office of Civil Rights is, is keeping up with the volume. Uh, having said that, though, I think that is better than the original bill where you'd have the duplication of effort, where both finance and, uh, council services would be trying to produce some sort of, um, you know, some sort of analysis. And in our experience, when we worked with the council president's office on, uh, they had a fiscal resource that was working on bill reports. Our experience was that we worked pretty well together with that person, uh, when there was someone in that role, and we would think that we could work with council services going forward on that, but it's probably better to just kinda vest the authority with, with, um, you know, one office or the other. So, uh, I guess in summary, we would say we're agreement with the concept of the bill. We don't have an objection to the amendment, um, but just wanna advise that we probably would have to add a handful of positions to keep up with the volume on these bills.
Okay, thank you. Law Department?
Yes, good, uh, good, good afternoon. This is Victor Bullock from the Law Department. We, uh, we looked at the amendments and we didn't see any problem with them, so we're to approve the bill for forming legal sufficiency as amended.
Okay, thank you. And then, I believe, the last one was, um, Office of Civil Rights, uh, Mr. McCray? Cedric? You still with us? Okay, um, Mr. Segman, did you wanna speak on behalf of the Office of Civil Rights?
Uh, I would be hesitant to speak on behalf of that agency, uh, only because I, I myself, uh, as Kalen mentioned, the, uh, we did see the amendments in advance of the hearing, but, uh, not far enough in advance to facilitate a conversation with all of our agencies.
Understood. Uh, and just getting the council president, uh, had a quick comment?
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Chair, and that's simply just to, to uplift that unlike the other bills today, this is not a charter amendment. I, I, well, I just thought that I forgot, I failed to mention that earlier, that this is not a charter amendment. This is something that solely the council will have to decide on. Thank you.
And, thank, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, for actually, uh, raising the, the point that not only is this something that, uh, won't have to go before the voters in two years, um, but is potentially available for the council to move forward, uh, with the ascent of the mayor, um, in, in the near future. So, um, are there any other questions from the committee, uh, of any of the agencies or of, uh, the president's office? Mr. Chair? Oh, Mr., Mr. Young?
Mr. Chair, I, I just noticed, there's one thing I actually wanna do, um, to one amendment that we'll do on the floor with your permission. Um, and that's, it's a simple thing, you know, sometimes we change names of agencies. Um, and so I wanna add some language, and I'll work with Tony DeFranco to do it on the floor, that would just say, um, you know, Department of Equity and Civil Rights or Successor Agency, something like that. Very simple, um, because we know that name has changed a few times.
Understood. Uh, Councilwoman Clark, did you have a question?
You must have read my face just.
Here's a practice, ma'am.
Yes, I know. Um, so, do we have an agency with that title? I, I am happy if we do, but I, I know there's a director for the city. Yeah, is there, that agency exist?
Yes.
Council, Council President?
Yes, uh, uh, yes, Councilman, it, it exists. It will continue, it will continue to exist.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just didn't, and there's a, there's someone in charge of equity for the city, um.
Yes.
I have her name. I think I, but I didn't realize it was an agency. Is it like a renaming of, of? I know I should know this, but I don't.
Hey, Councilwoman, what I would say is the best thing for us to do with this conversation is for you and I to have a conversation offline about it.
Okay, I, I have no, I have no problem with it. I just didn't.
About how things are, about how things are going to be done moving forward, because anything said today, uh, uh, is really irrelevant. Talk about how the, uh, agency operates, they will be operating on a different line of movement.
Okay, thank you.
And it looks like we have been rejoined by Mr. McCray. So, Mr. McCray, uh, we're waiting on the agency report from, uh, Office of Civil Rights.
Yes, uh, good morning. I apologize, was, uh, had to jump on another call and was notified that, uh, my name was called, so I apologize, uh, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. Um, yes, at this, at this point in time, uh, the Office of Equity and Civil Rights is in support of, of the suggestion, uh, put forth, an amendment, uh, that are being put forth, and, um, will gladly, uh, take any questions or answer any questions at this time.
Thank you. So, uh, last call for questions from the council? Seeing none. Uh, thank you, Mr. McCray. Uh, we're gonna go to public testimony. Um, oh, uh, so, Mr. DeFranco, I see your hand is up, I'm sorry. Um, did you need to comment on anything, uh, that we've already discussed?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to point out that if the committee were willing to go along with, uh, Mr. Young's suggestion, it, for efficiency purposes, you could just vote that orally today, and I can include it within the, uh, the committee amendments.
Excellent, um, okay, we will, we, the committee will take that under advisement. Um, I'm now asking for public testimony and, uh, looking through the list of online attendees. I'm seeing no hands raised, so, uh, and no callers, no call-in participants. So seeing that, I am gonna close public testimony. Uh, Council President, your hand is up. Did you have a further question or is that just leftover?
It was leftover, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry about that.
No worries. All right, um, in that case, uh, let's move on to the amendments. Uh, is the committee comfortable with adding the, uh, the amendment that Mr. Young laid out, uh, orally to the, uh, a printed sheet of amendments as we consider them? Councilman Burnett?
I don't have any objections, uh, to that, Mr. Chair. Um, but I don't, the other members are.
Councilwoman McCray, are you okay with that?
Yes, I am.
Okay, then, in that case, I would like to, uh, ask for a motion to move the printed amendments, including the addition by Mr. Young orally of the, or successor organization language. Is there, uh, such a motion?
Uh, I'll make the motion, Mr. Chair.
Moved by Councilman Burnett. Is there a second?
McCray, second.
Seconded by Councilwoman McCray. Uh, we'll just take a voice vote for this. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All right, any opposed, nay, motion carries, the amendments are adopted. Uh, the, is there a motion on the bill as amended?
Uh, I move the bill as amended, Mr. Chair.
Moved by Councilman Burnett. Is there a second?
McCray, second.
Seconded by Councilwoman McCray. Chairman votes yes. Councilman Burnett?
Yes.
Councilman Burnett votes yes. Councilwoman McCray?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCray votes yes. This bill moves forward favorably amended and will be on second reader at the next city council meeting. Uh, and then, I believe, last but not least, on, uh, today's agenda, we have City Council Bill 19 dash 0353 Charter Amendment Underground Conduit System Sale/Transfer or Franchise Prohibited. Uh, this was, uh, offered on behalf of the administration. So, Mr. Stegman, would you like to make sponsor remarks on behalf of the mayor?
Mr. Chairman, it would be my pleasure. Uh, appreciate the, uh, opportunity to do so. Um, the title of the bill is, uh, very straightforward and explains what it does. Uh, it prohibits the, uh, the, the sale or, uh, disposition of our underground conduit, uh, network, which, uh, the mayor believes is a valuable public asset and should remain in public, within public control. So, uh, that's the, that is the amendment, that is the rationale behind it. And, uh, I, I know we've heard this before, but if there are any questions from the committee, I'd be happy to address them.
Thank you. Are there any questions of, uh, of Mr. Stegman for the amendment as is? Seeing none, uh, go to agency reports. I, I, if, let me ask, uh, Sam, this is one we've heard already publicly. So this is just a work session?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we've already gone through agency reports, um, opposition from the Department of Finance, no objection from law, favorable reports from Transportation, uh, Office of Information Technology and B D C. Um, are there any questions from the committee about the agency reports or from the, uh, any questions for the agencies? Uh, any questions from, uh, Councilwoman Clark? Do you have any questions?
No, just how soon can we get this passed?
Uh, just a, a little bit more housekeeping, uh, Councilwoman. Um, okay, with, with no other questions from the council, I'm gonna look on the participants' list for, um, public testimony. So if you're interested in testifying on this charter amendment, please raise your hand at this time. Seeing no hands raised and seeing no, um, call-in attendees, I will close public testimony and ask for a motion on, no, actually, I'm sorry. Yeah, now, there are no amendments for this, you know, at least none that I'm seeing. So is there a motion to move this bill?
I, I'd like to make a motion to move the bill, Mr. Chair.
Bill is moved by Councilman Burnett. Is there a second?
McCray, second.
Seconded by Councilwoman McCray. Um, so we're going to, uh, have a roll call vote on that. The chairman votes yes. Uh, Councilman Burnett?
Yes.
Councilman Burnett votes yes. Councilwoman McCray?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCray votes yes. With three votes in the affirmative, this bill moves to second reader with a favorable report at the next city council meeting. Um, I believe that is all the bills before us at this hearing. So, um, thank you very much for joining us at this time. Uh, this, uh, hearing and work session is concluding. Everybody have a good weekend and stay safe.